Ubisoft Live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Nadine? Ready? Good evening. Call this meeting of the Marysville City Council to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rollins, present. Councilmember Gilchrist?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Badakavoli?
Here.
And Mayor Branscombe?
Here. If everybody please stand and join in the pledge. Pledge.
So as the citizens who comply of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. So we will proceed with the ceremony, the swearing-in and the penning ceremony. Then we will recess, and when we reconvene, we will continue with the rest of the presentations.
Are there any buttons we should be pressing to get rid of that feedback?
I'll check on that in just a minute.
It's you. Okay. That button. This is a momentous event. I am just as proud as can be, and I'm certain every, I know every member of the council and city management is proud to be here today for this event. We will soon be seeing our new Chief of Police sworn in formally. Prior to that, members of the council would like to say a few things in order. Stuart, you're always ready.
Fantastic, congratulations. Where are you? Oh! Couldn't be happier.
Awesome. Margie?
I'd like to say thank you, Bam, finally. Thank you for being, stepping up and being our leader. I know our community much appreciates you.
Brett?
Chief Nebeta, soon to be. I appreciate your presence here in Marysville, and I appreciate your leadership, because when there's leadership worth following, you have happy people. I want to say a little pre-congratulations and thank you for being here.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'm so glad that you got this position. I know that you've known our family for a long, long time. Everybody I know has commented how well-deserving this is and the type of person that you are, and I think that we all are very proud to have you in this position with us. Thank you.
Chief Vance. You know this better than I do probably. Trust is the most important thing in any relationship. I felt instant trust with you the minute I met you, and I know everybody else I know who knows you feels the same way. This is a great time for the city of Marysville. Shall we proceed with the swearing-in? What I'd like to do is, significant parties, that'd be the city clerk and Vance come forward. Family members, would you like to stand beside the chief when he's sworn in? Or are you going back and forth on that? And I'd also like to invite every member of the Marysville Police Department into the well, as well as the city council into the well behind you to support this important event.
Hello. Okay. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Vance Nebeta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. I'm overwhelmed by the show of support, and it has touched my heart. If I may, I'd like to take a moment to pray and call upon the name of the Lord for His blessing. If you would, please bow your head while we pray. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you tonight and give thanks for the opportunity to pray and seek your blessings upon all here. Lord, I ask that you would pour out your Spirit and grace upon us tonight, that you would give me wisdom, discernment, and balance scales of the heart, that I may serve according to the example set forth by our Lord Jesus Christ, who came not to be served but to serve. I pray, Father, that my fellow servants here tonight, my brothers and sisters in law enforcement, would be granted the same, and that we may work together in love with one mind and one heart in the pursuit of peace and all things good. Father, help us perform the duties of our office with honor and integrity to bring order and justice to the community and to restrain evil wherever it may be. Helpless, now I pray to be good Stewarts, and maybe we be filled with your Spirit as we go forward and serve our citizens. In all these things, I pray in Jesus' name, amen. In the Book of Romans, Chapter 13, it makes clear our role is to be God's servant for good. That means treating people with dignity, upholding integrity even when no one is watching, and ensuring that justice is tempered with compassion. More specifically, we are to address wrongdoers with a balance of accountability, fairness, and understanding. The law enforcement officer is a public servant for good, and our job or our mission is to protect the innocent and helpless and respond to and confront the criminal behavior among us. So if necessary, the evildoer will feel the full weight of accountability through arrest and incarceration. This profession is my calling, and by these standards, I hope to carry out the duties of this office. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager, my peers and colleagues, and most of all, my family. I wouldn't be here tonight without my wife, Nicole. The love and encouragement she gives has helped carry me through the difficulties of this profession, and I am very thankful and grateful for her. I humbly stand before you all tonight with heartfelt gratitude, and I accept the responsibility of serving as Chief of Police for the city of Marysville. Thank you all for placing your trust and confidence in me, and I pledge to serve this office with integrity, grace, and humility, and uphold the oath of this office. Finally, I'm committed to protecting the community through the fair and impartial application of the law, developing leaders for the future of this organization, and collaborating with the department heads of our city, government, to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. Again, I am happy, I am grateful, and I thank you all. God bless all here. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to recess downstairs for a small reception. There are refreshments downstairs. Please help yourself.
We're gonna turn this back around.
As a reminder. As a reminder, there are refreshments downstairs, so please make your way downstairs, grab some food on your way out.
Oh yeah, oh yeah. We will now reconvene and we will pick up the agenda. It's time for public comment. Anyone online or in the gallery who would like to comment on any item, not on the published agenda?
So Mayor, before that, we do have Carrie's presentation and then public comment?
I always screw these things up. Okay, Carrie, you first.
Carrie, that's a nice looking suit. You're looking good today.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So tonight, I'm here to do a little recap on the 25th Annual Marysville Peach Festival. I saw, I think, every one of you there. So thank you for coming and it definitely takes a village to put that event on. Mostly the city of Marysville's village with the police, fire, and public work. So do you want me, do you want to do the slides or do you want me? So the Peach Festival kicked off with our Peach Festival Awards. And the John Sidaro, or we'll go to the founders first. We, many years ago, Jody Sidaro and Andrew Coolidge came up with the idea for the Marysville Peach Festival. So we wanted to honor them since it's the 25th year of the event. So they came out and we gave them a Peach Award. And then the D. Darbans Visionary Leadership Award went to Bruce Sputta Cavoli this year. The John Sidaro Anori Award went to somebody we all know, Pepe Schrader. Who gives so much to the community. And then new this year, and it was just for this year, and it was very timely, but we came up with the Spirit of Marysville Award to honor Councilmember Brad Hudson.
I got Shanghai. Well deserved. May I say, I think I got Shanghai. Pepe and I were the only ones that were super surprised that we were actually getting anything. As I was not planning on being there, but I thank you, everybody, for that.
Well, it's well deserved, as we all know, with what happened with our 4th of July fireworks vendor. Brad leapt into action the night that we found out about the fire and started making calls. And he is the reason we were able to provide a 4th of July fireworks show for our community. do something different for the 25th. We put a giant inflatable peach at the corner of Fourth and D, and that seemed to go over really well. People, if you walked by there or spent any time in that location, there were hundreds and hundreds of people taking pictures in front of the giant peach. And I thought that was fun to watch families take those pictures. We also created reusable backdrops that, of course, we can use at future Peach Festivals. And we saw a lot of those pictures floating around online as well. This year, we added a third stage in front of Casa Carlos. It was managed by the Institute of Rock. Thanks to Bruce's careful administration of the entertainment budget, we were able to add a, pay for the stage and the generator and the tables and chairs for that location. And then the Institute of Rock, I let them know we don't have much of a budget, but most of their artists are students. So we got, I think, $20, $25 gift cards to Dutch Bros, and he handed those out to the students. So that was great, and I think very well received. I believe, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but Casa Carlos had a pretty good weekend. Two biggest days in the history of the restaurant. That's amazing. And then we had the children's area. It was different this year. There was a church group that took that on, and the event bought some play equipment, and we let the church keep that for future events. So they did all of that. It was wonderful. I thought it was a great, probably the best children's area I've seen in some time. We kept the street closures the same as we did during the hotel fire. What we found last year is leaving Third and Eighth Street open really aided with getting traffic around Marysville, which a lot of times there are really big backups during Peach Festival. So I think going forward that that is a really good footprint going Third to Seventh, Third to Eighth, but leaving Third and Eighth Street open just for transit purposes. And parking, lots of extra parking when we do it that way. We had about 35,000 people in attendance, and we had great weather. So I think that really, the weather really helped get people out. And I have to mention the coverage from our Sacramento news partners. I don't believe we would have the attendance that we have if it weren't for their promotion of the event. I know I myself did three different interviews on three different stations, and then I arranged many other interviews for brick-and-mortar businesses and some of the food vendors, fruit vendors, that kind of thing at the event. It was really well received and increased our attendance. Okay, here's some sponsor numbers. So our sponsor goal was 27,000. We went just over that at 28,000, and I was able to secure $7,000 in in-kind sponsorships. So that's a total of 35,000. Our exhibitor income goal was 39,000. I was worried at one point, but they all come in right at the end. So we went over that, collected $41,245. We did, a lot of the vendors, you know, as it's really hot that weekend, and a lot of the vendors that are usually repeat vendors, they come back year after year, we lost a lot of them after two years of extreme heat. So there were about 40% new vendors at this event. So we're hoping we can retain those. I think we will, because I did not hear one complaint from one vendor about their sales. Many sold out of their items. Many had to go make them two, more, two and three times and come back. Okay. These are just some photos from the event. We did the Tasty Treat Competition, which we do each year. And these are, you can see on the left there, those are the winners of the savory and sweet categories. And the middle picture is our new peach pie eating champion and our former. He was current, he was unseated this year. He got beat. It's so fun to watch. We livestreamed. If you want to watch it, we livestreamed it on the Peach Festival Facebook page. So lots of great things to eat and see. And then I wanted to share some brick-and-mortar feedback, because to me, I'm there for the whole event, but I'm really there for the economic impact locally. You'll see fabulous finds. These are texts. I hope they don't mind me sharing them, but these are texts that I received. I think Dan and I were on one in a group. But the one on the left is fabulous finds. You can see it says, "It was the best so far." Both of the stores, their stores had record-breaking weekends. Sissy's Attic said their numbers were up 55% over last year. It was the best sales weekend that they've ever had. I made some calls and talked to the candy box, and they said, "Best sales in the history of the 25 years during the Peach Festival." And the Honey Barn, Melissa told me that she had one 10-minute timeframe in the middle of the afternoon on Saturday where she didn't have a line at the counter. The rest of the time, her store was packed, and she had a line at the counter. Hands down, the best weekend that they've had. So I do want to take a moment and thank everybody who makes this event possible. We have a lot of help. Public Works is huge. They all deserve a bonus. From the, from Thursday night when we shut down the streets, we're out there with Public Works marking the streets, making sure everything's in order for the next day when we do vendor check-in. This year, I guess because the crowds were a little bit larger, and we didn't have a lot of volunteers working on trash management with Salav, so they jumped in and helped with trash management, which is a dirty job. And boy, we really appreciated that, because I do not want people to think of the Peach Festival and think of trash, right? And so they jumped into action. They even filled toilet paper. I mean, I filled toilet paper too, but I mean, they filled toilet paper, and that's like the least fun job at the event, filling the bathrooms. But we all have to do it, right? So the PD for managing all of the illegally parked vehicles inside the event footprint. We had illegal vendors outside the event footprint and inside, and they were able to take care of those for us. Nelson and Bob did an outstanding job. And then, just want to mention my volunteer check-in team, Helen Perkins, Heather Thompson, DeeDee Brady, and then my staff, Patrick Houck, Nate Flores, Randy Johnson. And I couldn't do this without that guy right there. He does so much, and he doesn't complain, except for this year, he broke his coke with a trailer running over his toe. So anyway, he's, he's a, he, it wouldn't be possible for me to do what I do without him. So thank you for the opportunity, and can I answer any questions?
Thank you for your hands-on leadership and all the experience you bring to the table.
Well, thank you.
These successes don't happen on their own. Way to go.
Thank you.
I too. Like I say, Carrie and Dennis and your crew and the city of Marysville with Public Works and PD and so forth. It was a great event. I mean, I've been going to them as long as you have, Carrie, since you started this 25 years ago. And well done.
Thank you.
In our opinion, we just don't need to see any more government entities in city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. We are not supposed to engage on any matter, not on the agenda. That said, you wouldn't get an argument from anyone on this dais about what you just said. How's that?
Absolutely. Just want you to know that I care about Marysville too, and I want the public's voice to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Joanna?
I bet we agree with you have to say, too.
Well, first off, thank you, guys. I appreciate you listening to me. But can we just put like a resolution on the table that we have the same weather for the Peach Festival as we did this year? I think everybody benefited from that, and I didn't walk away from it completely dehydrated. The second request I would ask is that you recognize somebody, whether it be in the city, city council, Marysville, somebody, every month so that you have a full chambers for your meetings. Recognize them at the end, so we have, they have to listen to everything that's going on through the city. But yes, I agree 100% with what Cody said. And, you know, we have such a large area outside of UBA County, or outside of Marysville, that UBA County could go to. And it's really hard to ask the citizens to approve a 1% tax when we're not doing stuff to bring in that revenue and those businesses and the citizens within downtown to then ask for that 1%. And so if we can bring more business, more people downtown, and you just said you agree, I think that's the goal. And I think we need to encourage people more to come to these things and express their thoughts of how we go forward. And it would be really nice to walk downtown. I've been recently to Old Woodland, Old Auburn, Grass Valley, Nevada City, all of those. And Marysville has so much character. If we can only bring those businesses and bring those entities and businesses to downtown Marysville, it would be just such a place to hang out to rather than us going out of town. But I appreciate all of you for what you're doing, and keep up the good work. And if there's any way the Republican Party can help any of you, please reach out and let us know.
Be through redistricting. Okay, Madam Clerk?
That's all the public speakers we have, Mayor.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, we can go to consent calendar. Typically approved on one motion unless a member of the council, the city manager wants to pull an item for later for separate discussion. What is the will of the council? Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous aye. Okay, we now move to a public hearing. And the public hearing, this is a formal public hearing. Members of the public will certainly be able to comment. Item number six on the agenda, provision of chapter 9.50.070 and addition of section 9.50.161 of the Marysville Municipal Code. Recommendation, pass a motion to hold a public hearing to formally introduce the first reading of ordinance 1461, authorizing changes to 9.50.070 and adding section 9.50.161 to the Marysville Municipal Code. Two, set September 2, 2025, as the date for the second reading and consideration for adoption of that ordinance, and waive the first and second full reading requirement of ordinance 1461. Okay, what's going on here? Mr. City Manager, I'll bet you know.
Yes, I do. As you, as people may recall, when we had the issues with the Marysville Hotel, we had a appeal hearing regarding the blight issues with the hotel. And that hearing was held by three building officials outside of our agency. While that was a very robust hearing, it is, has become cumbersome for us to utilize on smaller code violation issues. Trying to get three separate building officials from other agencies and attorneys lined up, as well as the appellant, has been very difficult. And so this allows for an option, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, legal counsel, for me to hear those hearings or opt to move it to a higher level with the larger board. And so it's really just streamlining the process and allowing some flexibility on staff's part to move these code enforcement violation hearings through. And we are enforcing more, so we are seeing more appeals at this point. So it's really just to allow us to work more efficiently. Nadine has had the pleasure of trying to schedule these with multiple building officials, and it has been difficult. So now she will only have to schedule my time, which she already does.
The time for public comment is now open. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
The time for public comment is closed. Any comments or questions from members of the council?
Future?
So Jim, I guess what I'm hearing is that because of several appeals from abatement issues, whether it be weed or construction or anything of that sort, can you give me an idea of how many we've had come to be addressed ministerially?
In the, well, Nadine can share that. I'm guessing it's half a dozen.
Half a dozen in the past, um?
In the past four months, five months, maybe?
So I mean, the egregious level of these rebuttals, are they large? Are they small? Is it like first stage? Because I mean, I know our municipal code has a had, I don't know if it still does, a three-tiered system where it comes out with a single find, and a second find, and a third find, then it comes to the, maybe I'm just speaking specifically to what I remember in the weed abatement code from 15 years ago. But I'm not sure where we are with this.
With blight abatement?
Oh, we did change that.
Blight, generally speaking, not weed abatement. But it is now, once they reach the violation stage, $100 a day.
It's $100 a day. Thank you. I needed that reminder. That's exactly what I needed. Thank you. So.
And that has motivated them to either clean it up or appeal.
In the appeal process, because we set precedence with the hotel issue, we now must set forth a three-person panel for every appeal. Is that what I'm understanding?
Currently.
The bill is changed, right?
Right now, it goes either to a three-person panel or this body, the council. We want an interim appeal. City manager, lawyer won't be in the room. The other side can bring whomever they want. It's to try and get to perhaps a negotiated resolution.
Copy that.
He issues the same opinion as the three-person panel, and then they can appeal. And then we would either have to come here, presumably get three of you to show up on an afternoon or get a panel. But we're probably going to lean towards the city council, just because we're doing more enforcement and it's tough to find people to take time out of their day.
Absolutely. No, I would agree with that. And if we can handle things ministerially through the staff, I think that's the most appropriate way. I just need a little more clarification of where we're going with that. So at this point, with what you shared with me, I'm in favor of what you're presenting. So at this point, with what you shared with me, I'm in favor of what you presented.
I want to just make sure I understand the process right. The process previous was after so many penalties, they could automatically go to the three-person panel? Or was there a step in between there?
The way it works is send them a courtesy notice. It's called a notice to comply.
Right, right.
If they ignore that, then they get the order to comply.
Right.
And the penalties start when we serve the order, and that's when they can appeal. There is no, there is no penalty assessment until they've gotten a courtesy notice, and then they're ordered. And if they fix it up within a certain time, they...
My, my question is, once they get the penalties, we get to the end of that point?
Yes.
They have the chance to appeal.
Yes.
What was the process before? Did that, at that point, go right to the three-person panel?
That's correct.
It did. So what we're going to do now is the same, obviously, the first same stages, then it'll go to you, and then from there, they could appeal it. And you said something about the council, or from there, if they appeal you, does it then go to a three-panel, three-person panel?
It would.
Come to me? Oh, go ahead, counsel.
No, yeah.
City manager will decide whether he's...
You can do it either way.
Yeah, he, that's it.
Okay.
And the council and...
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
One more chair, questions to the chair. So the three-person panel, is this something we have to budget, or is that a voluntary position or something along those lines?
It's volun, volunteer, we, I think we pay them some per diem.
So we don't pay any stipends on the volunteers for the building officials? The problem is, the local area doesn't have many to provide. However, if we do have to get a council to represent the panel, if it has to be outside of Brant's office, we do have to pay for council representation for the panel.
Thank you for that. I would lean towards the council, but all that being said, I appreciate the information, and I'd motion move to approve.
For the council?
Do you hear a motion there? The second.
Moved in second and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. We now move back to the regular calendar. Last item on the calendar is item number seven, titled approval of B Street Public Utility Easement. Thought that's why you're here, no? Recommendation is to pass a motion authorizing a resolution to allow the city manager or his designate certificates of acceptance for all conveyances to the city in accordance with California Government Code Section 7281, and to process abandonment of public easement after utility vacation. John Mallon, explain this to me.
Okay, can you hear me? So as part of the B Street project, we have the former right-of-way of Chestnut Street and 13th Street. It was abandoned in 2008, but at the time it was abandoned, the city retained a public utility easement over it because there was existing utilities within the easement, water, sewer, storm drain, power, and combs. But it runs through the building that they're proposing, so the developer's been working with the utility companies to relocate all these utilities, and they need to relocate into a new easement. And the best way to do that is to have a public utility easement, which the city's the steward of, and then all the utilities can go in one easement instead of having an individual one to all the different utilities. And as part of that process, the city has to have a designate to accept the easement, and that's under the government code. You can do it by individual resolution, but in this case, we designate the city manager. It also works for right-of-way, but we haven't had a whole lot of right-of-way dedication in the city. There's not any new streets. But in this case, we are getting a new public utility easement. And then after the utilities have all, we were going to record a document, it turns out there's two owners of the property now. The hotel group has like Presidio, whatever their ownership is, and then there's Bariesta Group that's the remainder of the site, and they're both dedicating this easement to the city. And once we get its approval, Jim can sign, or the city manager can sign the certificates, and then we'll take the documents that they prepared and record it. The new easement will be now valid. The utilities will allow them to move forward with relocating, and then after they relocated and there's no longer any utilities in the existing easement, then we can go back and vacate the easement that was retained when the right-of-way was vacated on Chestnut and 13th. So that's kind of the process. It's a little bit involved or something simple. The other day, it's just moving, moving the lines.
Public comment?
We do not.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor?
I totally understand, totally need to move that way. I'm just curious, who picked up the tab for all the engineering on that? The developer?
They prepared, they prepared the new Platts and Legals descriptions. I just reviewed them to make sure that they were correct.
Okay.
And then they're picking up the tab for all the utility relocation themselves. Well, I know it was worked into your deal, I'm not reviewing too, but yeah, like they're relocating the sewer line, and then they're working with Cal Water and...
Yeah, I didn't actually mean the moving, just, just the design and engineering and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
They provided and you saw it.
Yeah, all I did was review it to make sure that it...
Perfect.
But they, they prepared all that.
Good chair. So this resolution being born from the B Street project, if I'm understanding, reading this correctly, this sets precedence and then it will give the city manager any sort of oversight to be able to do this for any future project as well?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm agreeing with it. I think it's more appropriate to streamline the whole situation and give it to our staff.
Most agencies have, have the, either the city manager or some other, you know, public works director, somebody designate within the organization.
Totally agree with it. I, I agree with what's being presented, and once again, move to approve.
Mayor, your mic, Mayor.
Any other comments before we go to a second? No, the comments, there's been motion. We have a second?
Second.
Moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Council correspondents, Madam Clerk, do we have any that you haven't mentioned?
We do not.
Good. Council comments? Anybody ready with a comment?
Go ahead, please. Ladies, all right, I was going to go ladies first, but mine's sweet and simple. I appreciate the staff pulling things together with our special meeting and so forth yesterday. Quite the show with the opinion of our new chief, and I think that's pretty awesome. Thank you, John, who's not in here, who was the wrangler of the, of the event. And the attendees are good. I think Chief Nabet is a phenomenal asset to our team, and I got my eyes opened up a little bit yesterday, too, by attending another meeting, and I just want to say thank you to our staff, who spent a lot of time into another committee that protects the city of Marysville. And I got more to say about that in the future, but thank you for what you guys do.
Yes, as always, thanks to the staff for everything you do for us and the constituents. I did attend the Peach Festival, like many of you, and saw our two council members being awarded, which was very special.
Lamafa.
Stay quiet. The National Night Out was also, I also attended that. It was, it was the great success, how they honor our veterans. Lamafa was there, that was awesome. He, you know, the opening, very nice. This one a reminder, the Farm to Fort Dinner is scheduled for September 27th. It's going to be a great experience. And I wanted to also congratulate the chief again, are, I think, very blessed to have him. Thank you.
May I add one more thing, please, Mayor? In regards to what you shared about the Yuba Sutter Stand Down, I just, I got wrangled into volunteering for two hours, which I saw you bagged out on, but that was all good. It was a great event to be able to help out our veterans of all conditions, and I was proud to work with Lamafa and our counterparts in Yuba City and Sutter and Yuba County. It was a good event. Thank you.
Thank you, city staff.
I wanted to, I wish Carrie was still here, because I want to do, I want to understand. I've been doing the music for this thing for, I don't know, 10, 12, 14 years, maybe. And this is the first year that although what I do is a nice piece of it, I could not believe, watching her, how much she went through and how much she did to organize everything, including that little piece that I did.
She's a force of nature.
It was unreal, watching her and working with her all day. So I just, I wanted to give her kudos on that. That was great. I attended the Lamafa Town Hall. I thought that was one of the most shameful exhibitions of a group of people that I've ever seen in my life. I felt like he did an amazing job to stand up there with what was going on and face everybody and do his best up there. I think I probably would have walked out. And it was, it was nice to see our representative stand up there in the way that he did among that crowd. So thanks, thanks to Doug Lamafa for what he did there.
Got a few items. First, this, this just came to mind, the Packard Library. I don't know what reminded me of it. I know a number of us toured it within the past week. It's the first time I've been in that library since I was in grade school. I'm ashamed to admit. I don't think I made it there during high school. And again, I did spend a lot of time in Marysville High School, but I was prepared for much worse. The major problems, it appears to be the butcher job they did in a remodel back in the seventies. But it looks like it can all be remediated. And so I'm still concerned on how deep into seven figures it's going to have to be to make that thing go, but I don't think it's going to be eight figures. And, and that makes a big difference in the prospects and the, the opportunities set that we can bring to that thing. And we have a fabulous real estate resource that we employ, and he's, so far, he's batting a thousand. This will be a tough one. I know that Stewart is applying a lot of his genius to it, and he's got a lot of thoughts that none of us had ever come up with, and I see him and hadn't thought about that. So I went into it worried, not skeptical, just worried, and I'm not as concerned. It's, it's still a reason for concern. It's a long ways from a slam dunk to get something done there, but it seems a lot more likely. Quickly on the Lamafa. First of all, I was told it was going to start at eight. Then someone texted me, oh, it's 8:30. I show up at 8:30, and it's been, I mean, I show up at 8:25, and it's been going for a half hour. Anyway, I, and then I see Dan, and Dan said when he showed up at 10 minutes to eight, the room was full. And, well, and then I remember going around, particularly when you're hearing all the comments, and I'm looking around, and I haven't been back in town that long, but normally I'll recognize some people. Other than people I see frequently, very frequently, I didn't recognize a soul, not a soul in the room. So I think it's, it's, it's a tactic, and I'm certain, I think it's a, it's a tactic employed by both sides of the spectrum, you know? Send the team and show up, and however, this was, there was one woman, she was right in front of me in the comment line, maybe not right in front of me, but just a couple steps ahead of me in the comments line. And she had a piece of paper there, and she got the microphone. I want to read you the definition of fascism. Every syllable of her recitation of the dictionary meaning of fascism was so loaded with emotion, anger bordering on hate, each syllable. And then when she was done, she gave Doug a so-there look. You know, it was, it was uncomfortable, and it made me feel bad for Doug. But I stood in line just because I felt something, someone needed to say things that should be said about Doug, what a, his background, his character, trust, and, but I think in the current environment, it's going to be like that. September 12th is going to be the sod busters. And is it inappropriate of me for to ask, the team putting up signs for sod busters, they're wondering where they can put them up in town? Should I have them contact Jeremy or somebody? Okay, I will. I'll, I'll do that. They reached out to me today, and hell, I didn't know what to say. Put them up wherever you can and see if they last. Anyway, those are my comments. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I have a few items. First of all, I just hired a... Pardon me. First of all, we just hired a great new chief. I'm very proud of the fact that he is willing to serve. A little history, I was wanting to see how Vance shook out, not just from the city's perspective, but from his perspective, and wanted to make sure he was comfortable with the position and we were comfortable with him. I was intending to give about six months in the interim position to see how he would do, and there was a couple of things mentioned tonight. First of all, the mayor mentioned trust, and he is a, a person that I feel I can trust. He also mentioned honor and integrity and servant leadership. I had actually written those down ahead of time for this discussion and, or my comments, and I was glad that he, he brought those up. I told Vance the other day that we were, I wanted to offer him the position, and I had already spoken with most of council about Vance in the past, and I felt comfortable offering him the job. But I also told Vance that I had spies going around, specifically Mr. John Perry, and he had been casually talking with the police department staff, and it was an overwhelming yes for moving him into that position. I have not heard a negative thing from any community member about the chief. And when I told council for the last time, and I told council that I intended to offer him the position, and, well, actually, I told council, I believe, that I had offered the position and he accepted. I'm paraphrasing, but the answer... I'm paraphrasing, but the answer from the council members was, well, it's about time. So very happy to have Vance on board as the chief. It does also solve a problem I've had in what to call Vance? Vance or interim chief? Interim chief just doesn't ring very well. Now I can just call him chief like I do Mr. Hegstrom over there. Then I just gotta remember to say, if they're both in the same room, which chief. It was a great ceremony. I, I wanna thank my staff for putting this together at the last minute. I really just said, okay, I'm gonna, I've offered Vance a chief, he's gonna, he, he took the job, so we got a new chief. And then I was reminded that there's a lot of stuff that has to happen beyond that. So Maggie, Nadine, John, and Misty did a great job of pulling this together in a couple of days, really. So thank you for all of that work. Moving on to, well, we also, I, I, I talked about great leadership and I think also we have another great leader coming on board, Jeremy Dapdalen, did I say it right? And that's Jeremy with A. We, I, I get mixed up, Anissa with one N and two S's. Anyway, once again, I, I try not to rely on just my own opinions and I interviewed or I, I snuck around asking people about Jeremy. I talked to two previous interim city managers for Live Oak and for those who don't know, Jeremy serves on the Live Oak Council. So he's got some of the Dan flavor in him. But Mark Scott, who I have known for a long time, he, he's been a career city manager. He worked at Live Oak for a period of time and he worked through some of the major issues that Live Oak had with their council. And I was concerned and I said, well, how, how is Jeremy doing? How did Jeremy do? And he said Jeremy was the stabilizing agent, the calm person in that council. So that made me feel well. And then I talked to Carrie Houck, who served over there as the city interim city manager for quite some time and I respect Carrie's opinion and she reiterated the same thing.
So I'll bet you thought it was just your personality.
Jeremy comes with some great experience to add to our team. He came up through the building inspection ranks and actually served as a building official in the past and so we are going to utilize those talents to their fullest. And I know he's already been talking to John Perry, our personnel director, about how to get our internal building inspection staffing moving forward. We just approved the job, the renewed job description and so I'm looking forward to that. He also, for the last several years, has worked for the State Parks Department and his role, if I understand it correctly, was managing projects throughout the region, various parks related projects, a lot of them with complex environmental issues and, and keeping projects moving for the state. And so we definitely need that experience here. We have more projects than, than we can manage at this point, so I'm very glad to have that additional talent on our staff. So I, I did wanna welcome Jeremy as well. Glad to have him on board and I think he's going down to Secog with you guys tomorrow.
Jeremy, a few words.
Or Thursday, excuse me. Yeah, yeah. No, it's just, it's really an honor to, to be here. I look forward to working with the mayor and this council and it, it really is a privilege to, to come in and, and work with this executive team as well. I have a special place in my heart for the Yuba Sutter Region. I, I've spent a good deal of my career on the other side of the river with the city of Yuba City before, you know, moving on to some bigger agencies to, to really, to move up and, and build that, that portfolio of experience and it's just, really excited to be coming back to, to my area, to my region and as I mentioned, you know, moving up in those bigger agencies, city of West Sacramento, the state. At the same time, those were, those were, you know, great experience, great projects, worked with great people in those areas, but local, local city government to me is, is the right fit for me. I, I'd love to see the impact that our, our projects and our teams can, can make on, on our community and just really excited to get back to that. So yeah, it's been a busy couple of days after starting yesterday and it's, but I'm glad, I, I'm glad I did. The timing was great. I'm glad I was able to, to see this, this evening, share this evening with our new, new chief and be, be part of that ceremony as well and just really, like I said, look forward to working with everyone.
Hardly welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple more items, then I'm gonna turn the events over to Dan. I mentioned B Street, the PUE, the easement thing was a big step in the, the direction, but if you've been by B Street, they are going to town on relocating. I don't think they're held up because of the relocation, they're moving stuff as we So we're trying to take all the hurdles out of the way so that they can keep going. We also have a couple of smaller housing, residential projects moving on D Street, including the, the project Chris Gill's working on in the former trainer, training zone, one side of it and that looks like it's moving well, as well as Ozzy's project on the opposite side of the street. And there seems to be quite a bit of interest in renting even before they're done. That's, that's what I think both Cody and Joanna were talking about for the downtown area, having housing and businesses that drive the economy in that area. So that, that is our target for the downtown area. We also have another big thing coming up. Carrie was here talking about the Peach Festival and the success there. National Night Out was the biggest national night out we had, but we are coming up on our 175th birthday for Marysville and it also is going to be the nation's 250th birthday and so Carrie is helping us plan something big. We're not ready to talk about the details yet, but expect an epic event, right, Dan? So with, and that, with that, I'll turn it over because it's going to be a busy September event wise and I'll have Dan cover those again. Some of these you may have heard about, but it's good to mention them again.
Hey, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I will keep it short because I know the mayor's looking at me like, okay, don't do one. But all, but all of these, everything is listed on the website, so we're excited about that. But first, I wanna say on behalf of Community and Economic Development, congratulations to Chief Nebeta and we are excited to have him as the chief. We've already been working on several items together and it's been a pleasure working with him. And then also, congratulations to Jeremy and welcome on board to the executive team. We look forward to working with you and Jeremy and I have already tackled several issues together as well, so, and it's, it's just exciting to have this team that's come together and looking forward to the future on that. Just, so real quickly, Mr. Shad mentioned some really cool downtown projects that are happening and we're right about 100 new residential units that are getting planned for downtown, as well as multiple businesses that are looking downtown. We plan to do a report by end of September that will be what I call the popcorn report because I'm gonna bring you popcorn and you'll have to sit through it and listen to all of the items that are there because it's a very long list, but it's, it's a great list. It's something that you as the council can be very proud of because you are the catalyst behind this with your vision to make this happen. So very exciting times, but just giving you the rundown on just a few of these events. We would really love you to join us at a ribbon cutting tomorrow for the Adopta Park for the cemetery. So hopefully you can make it to the cemetery tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. or sorry, 8:20, is tomorrow 8:20? Yeah, tomorrow's 8:20. Yeah, no, sorry, 8:20 tomorrow, 11:00 a.m. And then just a few brief ones. The Brew Fest coming back to Bryant Field this year, it was very successful last year, very successful the year before, and this time they're tying with the High Wheelers. They're coming to Bryant Field, they expected them, this to be the biggest one that they've had. They're having it in Bryant Field and then outside on C Street. So they're combining both and they're promising to be a, a big event. That's on the 6th and that starts at noon and ends at 5:00 and then you can go to the baseball game afterwards. So that'll be a really exciting night as well. The Say Love Dinner is going to be in downtown Marysville on the 5th and that's going to be on First Street in front of Silver Dollar. Silver Dollar's actually making the food and that, that is going to be on the 5th at 5:30 p.m. And then a cattle drive, our cattle drive is back and it's gonna happen on the 10th and that's gonna, they're gonna be coming all through town as those, if you haven't, well, you guys have all been here, but the cattle are coming through town, so that'll be the kickoff for the sod busters, which will be on the 12th at Cotton Ross Arena. And then we have the Stampede that happens on the 13th and 14th. And then Fall Nights on D Street in downtown Marysville on the 18th of September. And then A Bridge for Hope, which is a walk, a walkathon. And then there's a big party, it's called Boots Buckles and Brew, which is downtown on the 20th, which will be on D Street, held on that night. And then Mr. Shad already mentioned the Farm to Fork in downtown Marysville. So we look forward to all of these events and like I said, these are all on the web and we're, we're gonna have a very busy several weeks here. And I look forward to giving you the report on the economic impact of the new development happening in downtown and we're just in the process of putting that all together for you now, which will include economic development numbers as well as actual images of what's going on downtown. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Are we there? Next meeting, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, 6:00 p.m.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.